Good afternoon. This is the meeting of the Environmental and Sustainability Committee of the City Council. And we're just taking attendance. I've got Kathy Bonho, Amy Loizel, and Denise Caputo. And Steve, is that Steve Howard?
He's muted.
Oh, it's Steve Lonergan.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Steve Lonergan. Thanks a lot.
No worries.
Okay, and in the room here, we have Attorney Shea, we have Counselor Allen, myself, Zaida Govan, Brian Skelly and his wife, Sasa Ping. Sasa Ping, thank you. All right, great. So we are going to start the meeting. Is there anyone else on Zoom that I can't see? So, we called this meeting because I did want to speak to the developers, because I heard that, I guess, they had some concerns. So I did want to hear from them to see what the concerns were and see how we could address it and find common ground. And I don't see anybody here. So, did everyone get the updated version of the ordinance that we sent out? Did you get one, Tom? You can't?
I'm not sure. Mine has X1 findings. Is that the one?
It probably says the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, it starts with X1.
Just make sure. We just made a few smaller changes. Did you give them one?
No.
Oh, you got it.
No, that was the...
Oh, that's the...
The updated one. It's been updated a million times, Ken.
Yeah, I know that. I'm sure I'm on top of the update.
You're on the right one. That's right. All right. So, any, since we don't have any of the developers here, we could talk about what some of the developers were concerned. Does anyone know of any concerns that the developers had?
I think they were worried that this would apply to too many properties. And we were trying to address that, and Amy can speak on this more in detail. We were trying to address that by having a threshold of five to 10, somewhere in the range of five to 10 trees where there's not a necessity to apply. And we're still working on that. Jay Latour said maybe we should have fewer than five trees not requiring an application, but five to 10 trees might require an application, but if approved, no hearing would be required. That was his notion.
Well, that was really to address the homeowners. So we do want to make a clear distinction between some of the changes we made. And it was Zaida, Counselor Govan, Brian and I with Jay met. And there were two categories of concerns. One was homeowners. And so we went into the ordinance dated 7/22. And we made it even more explicit. It already had exemptions in there for owner occupants. So it said owner occupants, if they were cutting fewer than 10 trees and could prove they lived on the property, then they did not have to do anything. There'd be no hearing, no permitting, no nothing. But we made sure that that's like even more clear in the ordinance. So that's really for homeowners. Then the concerns of developers. I don't think we ever heard any specific concerns of developers, but Tim Sheehan at the last meeting, as somebody who speaks with developers, said that he felt that this might, you know, cover too many lots. And he seemed to argue that developers and himself thought it would cover every single lot in Springfield. So again, we just went in. It clearly doesn't do that. It clearly says there has to be a canopy of a certain amount. It has to be a certain sized lot. There has to be a plan to cut over a certain percentage of trees. So if somebody's going to go in and cut a handful of trees and leave a 25% to 50% canopy, then they don't have to do anything. This is about people that want to go in and clear cut lots that are full with trees and provide a large tree canopy. And again, like, I went in and did a bunch of research. There's many cities that already do such type of sustainable permitting. They, you know, this is just modern urban planning. This is not even environmentalism. This is like, urban cities understand, as we just experienced, we are going to be experiencing more and more extreme heat and more and more extreme and longer hotter summers. And so this is just modern urban planning to say, what is the only proven way to cool cities citywide? And it is urban forests, not individual trees. Individual trees are great. But, so what we're trying to find is that middle ground between developers who might want to clear cut because it's cheaper to, you know, bring trucks in and pour concrete foundations and driveways without trees. We understand that. But also with modern urban development and, you know, and planning for housing in which, you know, 10 or 20 years from now, the city is not barren of urban woodlands and completely exposed to heat, which is just going to create even more heat islands, more public health issues, more flooding, you know, all of the things that go with climate change. So, you know, we tried to really be clear. Homeowners are exempted unless they're going to cut, you know, over 10 trees. And developers, it's only going to be lots where they want to go in and remove a certain amount of tree canopy. Again, not over environmental, like, oh, it's pretty, but over like, climate change is here. Cities are planning for it. They have modern development and modern housing without, you know, getting rid of all their urban forestry.
That's correct. And if you notice on the ordinance, there are some starred items, like for example, the 25%, a tree canopy greater than 25%. That is negotiable. Right? We can talk about, does that have to be more? Should it be less? I like that number because I think it's a reasonable number. Also, where the Urban Woodlands Commission is going to be housed. And we think it might be best at the forestry division of the Parks Department. But again, negotiable. We can talk about it. And then the look back period also, because that's something that I think is very important. You don't want people to, you know, buy a lot and then sit on it maybe, or, you know, do the damage. And then say, you know, years later that, okay, it's okay, we can build on that. So again, any homeowners here? Oh, Victor, that was on. Hold on. I think they let him in. Any homeowners here that might want to comment, to ask? We had some additional people join us. Vern MacArthur is here. Counselor Dabila is here. And Jay Latoury.
Jay's here.
Excellent.
Good.
So again, thank you all for coming on and joining us. Oh, and Richie Allen is here. He's one of my favorite Allens.
Has he moved ahead of me, Zaida?
Not yet. He's close though. He's catching up on you. All right. So again, again, thank you all for being here. Again, we don't have the developers here, but I think that we are aware of their concerns. And I think that we can certainly have them, you know, develop properties in our cities without necessarily making our future generations pay for it in the form of, you know, greater asthma rates and more pollution. So any comments on the ordinance? Does anyone want to, as a homeowner, right? I think Amy explained really well. The homeowners would probably not be affected at all unless, of course, they want to cut down more than 10 big trees, right? And it has to have that diameter. So I doubt that they'll be affected. I have a whole bunch of trees on my lot. I don't want to cut them down. I think there's one that might be sick. But that wouldn't apply to me if I wanted to cut one sick tree down. It would exempt from...
Yeah, there's full exemptions for trees deemed dangerous or dying. So.
Okay.
Right. Okay, good. So maybe we don't have to be here for a whole hour. You know how I am about time. I do want to bring up, and I don't know what you all thought about this. I actually was speaking to someone at No One Leaves, which is the Housing Advocacy Agency in the city. And they were talking about all the property in the city that is not developed and that there are vacant buildings, houses that are not being used in order for us to increase our housing stock. Those might be good places to do that with. And how do we encourage developers to look at those places as opposed to looking at an urban forest?
In other words, previously, properties gone fallow that need to be redeveloped.
Correct.
Yeah, I was looking into some of that, Zaida, because you and I have talked about how do we incentivize the actual development that we want, that we want affordable housing, we want commercial and economic development, but we also want climate change planning. And so I was looking, and there are different ways to incentivize. So what the city could do with some of these where there's abandoned factories, derelict properties. Now, some of this, and Kathy and the finance people would understand this better than me. Some of them have to go through the process of seizure, that they have not been paying property taxes. And there is a process that the city has to go through to take the property from the homeowner. But then the city does have a process then of like putting these properties up on public auction and could add incentives to it, like reducing or cutting property tax for a year or two, or offering subsidies through certain state grants to say that part of the building cleanup of like the asbestos and lead and stuff would be subsidized by state and city funds. So there are programs to do that and there are options to do that. It just, it is a process, because I was looking into properties that City Hall has tried to take over for tax delinquency. And it tends to just kind of take the properties over and then leave them there. And I don't think there's been kind of, and scams would be interested in helping the city through a volunteer project basis of trying to find out how can we get these properties, you know, out of delinquency and up as like incentivized property that would have like either tax breaks or subsidies.
Definitely. And I would like, I guess, an inventory of how many properties the city currently has on that status that it already owns, that we can possibly, you know, begin the process. I'm sorry, Counselor Allen, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So I just, just a few minutes ago, I emailed or texted Tim Sheehan to say nobody was here. No developers are here and nobody from his organization. And he's not able to come. He had a conflict. So just wanted you to know I reached out to him.
Okay, well, Kathy is here from Finance, and I think you can see...
Yeah, so let me, let me keep going with, I mean, from Economic Development, there's nobody here. And, but Steve Lonergan is here. And Steve, you have been in that role with the delinquent properties for, you're not in, I know that's not your current job, but could you enlighten us a little bit on that, the things that are being said about what the city does once a property goes delinquent?
Well, right now, Counselor, the current environment for textile properties is very much up in the air with the new tax equity laws that the state's pushing through. So as a result, right now, we don't have a clear cut. They have a law that's not clear. They have questions on what we have to do. There's a lot of hoops that are going to have to be jumped through. Right now, for example, we would have to, A, make the decision quickly, then B, hire a Realtor to list it for a year before it could go on a public auction. We could also do an RFP, but that takes time and there's ramifications after that. Because once you sell the property, you have to sell for a certain amount so you can get, give back the equity and keep track of that. We've been monitoring the state good year plus now, since this came out. The law has passed effective November 1st, and they're currently arguing now, is it November 1st? Or is it going backwards? Or is it going forward? So no one knows the rules right now. And so as a result, we made a decision, at least when I was downstairs, we made the decision that we were going to hold off for the time being till we get an understanding and have a handle, a clear cut law to follow. And then at that point, proceed with any auctions of tax. And this is strictly the textile property. That's the stuff I dealt with. And foreclosure property mainly. And so, you know, if we don't own the property, there's, that one I can't address. But if we own the property, we're trying to figure out the best way for the city to go forward while complying with this new law.
Steve, is that new law, is that driven by, did something cause us to have to make changes in that law? From the years of, you know, you had, I remember when we were having the foreclosure problem, tenure or whatever, you would tell us how many there were and how many were going to be sold at auction and things like that. The world has changed since then?
The world has changed. I want to say in 2023, there was a Supreme Court, Tyler versus Hennepin County of, I think, South Dakota, but Hennepin County anyways. And they, what was determined was that the states or person who foreclosed on the property cannot hold the excess equity. So if you owed $1,000, and I'm exaggerating the number for example, if you owed $1,000 and you sold a house and we'll say we're in, you know, so $100,000, that extra 90 was supposed to be returned to the, they found it should be returned to the homeowner. Then that being said, then everything happened. And they were working on it, trying to figure it out. At one point, Springfield was a case where someone in Springfield, we didn't own the property, but they sued anyways. And the court determined that the, while we didn't break the law, the law was unconstitutional now as a result of that decision. So at that point, we had to read, you know, the stakes kind of scrambled. And that was, I forget, a couple of years ago anyways. But they, they passed the law last minute through the budget saying, just completely changing everything without honestly really thinking about it. So then as soon as they passed it, and the different organizations that deal with this came back, oh, what about this? What about this? What about this? It was kind of like, oh yeah, okay, we need to look at this again now. And so it's getting down to the weeds now, really. Is it, like you said, is it prospective or retro? And that's a whole discussion still going on. There was an amendment to the supplemental budget from the governor that defined that, because the DOR said it one way, the court said it a different way. And then, but that didn't make it out yet. They split up the amendment and kept that in committee to discuss some more. So there, right now, there's, part of the law is that they're currently developing a committee, which the, like the Treasury Association, different, you know, the courts, et cetera, will be involved with in the state legislature to kind of iron that out. It's right now, my concern would be that we do, if we do all this, you know, all these things with the textile property. I'm strictly talking textile property, not disorients or anything else, that tomorrow they could change it. And we have to undo everything and redo it again. So I'm trying to get a better handle where it says, okay, this is definitive. It's been definitive for a while. So now we know this is the way we're going to do things. And then proceed forward from there.
So this, so this ordinance, this proposed ordinance, and one of the, I'm just thinking of, I have not been involved really with drafting it or anything. And I haven't really talked to anybody since our last meeting in here. But there was the idea that this would go on, you know, people that were buying large blocks of land in suburban parts of the city. How would that, this ordinance affect them? And then this has been, now the idea is, what can we do to, how can this ordinance help in the more congested parts of the city?
No, no, no. We are not, the ordinance will not be, come about incentivizing other development. Zaida and I are just on a parallel track. So there's the ordinance. The ordinance is just going to focus on tree canopy and climate change mitigation. But then Zaida and I were saying, if one of the concerns of developers is that they need options, like, how can we create the options? But the ordinance is not going to be involved in that whatsoever. And to Steve's...
Hold on, Amy, I'm sorry. Counselor Allen had the floor.
But he was saying the ordinance is going to do this. We're not saying that, right?
No, we're not saying that. And let him finish, and then you can respond, because I just see your hand up.
Yeah, I might have said it wrong. I'm just trying to do something to move this meeting along. Because we don't have the people here that we thought we were going to have. So I'm just trying to say, what, how can we make some progress here with the people we have? So if I said it wrong, it was...
Yeah. So, yeah, but the thing with that, I think, is that words have power, right? So when we say something, even if it wasn't intended to be that way, somebody might take it and then they're going to run with it. So thank you for correcting that, Amy. But I don't think that you meant it that way.
I'm just trying to move this thing along.
Okay, okay. Okay, go ahead, Amy.
Oh, no, I just wanted to make sure, because like you said, Counselor Govan, I'm just concerned because if somebody hears, oh, the ordinance is going to deal with like tax title property, like that can spin off into... So that's all. But I just wanted to add to what Steve was saying is like, there's a variety of derelict properties. So as Steve was saying, he was just very clear. He's talking about tax title and the issue of properties that are deemed delinquent in their taxes or in their foreclosure. But we could also incentivize properties that a company might be sitting on for a long time. For example, we know that the Community Partnership Group is selling off properties because, you know, Herbie Flores is, and the transition there. And that a few nonprofits bought properties in the North End that had been sitting derelict for years. And so if the tax title that Steve is talking about is way too complicated at this stage of the game, we can still get a list of derelict or abandoned properties that have private property owners that might be willing, if they're given the right incentive, to sell to a developer like they did in the North End.
Yeah. And so Steve, do you know exactly how many tax title properties we have?
Counselor, this, no, I'd have to pull, go downstairs and ask them, pull a list together. I can certainly do that.
Yeah, if you could at some point, it's not a rush, but I do want to know how many. And then when, the example that you gave regarding, okay, we get it for $1,000 and we sell it, and then there's equity in it, from that equity, does the taxes, do the taxes have to be paid?
The way it works is a couple of things. When I say tax, the list of things, this will be foreclosed city-owned properties.
Okay.
The tax title is technically, once we put a lien on the property. So I just want to be clear on that one. As far as the equity, no. The way that the law has stated is, after costs, so property management costs, they keep it up, and taxes are paid, the difference between the sales price and what is owed is returned back to the taxpayer, to use this way to put it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So I think what I'm going to do, I don't, if anyone else, what I'm going to do is I am going to maybe have another meeting before we decide to bring this to the City Council with possibly No One Leaves. And I would like for Jerry McCafferty to come on and talk about the properties in Springfield. Because I want to say that maybe No One Leaves has done an inventory of, you know, empty buildings, houses. And we have to figure out who, of course, you know, from there. But we're not doing anything regarding that here. But I would like to start having that conversation. Regarding the ordinance, I think that, you know, I think we're ready to have a conversation at the City Council for it, unless someone has an extreme objection to that.
Let me just say, this reminds me of the zoning ordinance, which I talked to, you know, mentioned, which took place 10 years ago at a minimum. And at that time, the developers were totally against the zoning ordinance. You know, there's a block of developers, three, two or three or four, that were very much against it. And I think I mentioned how it took us a year or two. And Ken Shea came on board and partnered with me. I was kind of driving it, like you are here, Zaida. But Ken came on board and was able to get some people to vote in favor of it that I had not been able to do. So that was a great partnership with Ken. They don't come easily. Look at you, invited them all. I don't think, I don't think this is City Council ready. I think you need to have a specific meeting where they are kind of required to come, because...
What are we going to hear from them that we haven't heard already?
What, how they feel this affects them. That's the idea.
Tim Sheehan, I think, has expressed that concern, right? And we, Amy, I think, said what they say, right? Well, no, we don't want to have to ask permission to knock down a whole forest full of trees in your city. We just want to go in and knock it down and build a house. That's what they want.
I don't know. That's where you get out of a meeting with them. They tell you what they want.
We invited them. I know that the City Council staff did send out some invitations. One of our councils actually said she was going to be here. She's not, right? So I feel like I answer to the constituents in the city of Springfield. I answer to the residents. So this is what is pushing this, right? This is not Zaida Govan saying, oh, we need to have this ordinance because I feel like it should be there. I do believe in it. I believe in the climate change. I believe in, you know, the city getting hotter because we don't have enough trees. So I want to make sure that we protect what we do have in the future. And we do have a few groups here of residents that agree with it as well. So, you know, if the developers decide they don't want to come, they could block this for years because they're not coming to a meeting. I can't wait for that. The city of, the residents of the city can't wait for that. So I feel like we need to move forward. We've come this far. We've been meeting for a year about this. Exactly, a year in April, May, June, July, a year and three months we've been meeting about this. And I don't, you know, I know that things take a very, very long time to get done. We actually just got a speed hump in Indian Orchard that has been waiting for five years. Mrs. Footman is so happy about that. But we finally got it. I just feel like, you know, we need to move this forward. And I hear what Steve is saying regarding, you know, the state and the laws and things regarding the tax title property. That's another issue that, again, we're going to start talking about going forward. But I think we need to find a way to move it forward. If not in September, then maybe October. You know, but I would love for it to be on the agenda before the end of the year. I do see hands up. Jay, you were up first.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just have some brief comments that I apologize to the group for both being a little late and that I have to log off a little early here. So I will certainly defer to your committee on, you know, when is the right time to go before the City Council? I do, and I might not be aware of everyone that's been invited to a meeting every time, but I would be in favor of one more meeting, only because, I mean, subcommittee meeting, only because even though the last meeting, you know, you might say it was a little contentious, I think we got a lot out of that from having all the city departments here and reviewing the latest draft. I think it takes some of the concerns into consideration. There was a lot of good that came from that. Though, you know, I think it would be great if the draft could be circulated one more time, especially to some of the groups that, you know, were very interested in this in the last meeting but couldn't make it today. You know, give them one more opportunity to, you know, kind of share their opinions, maybe offer additional tweaks. And that way, when you do decide that it's ready to go before the City Council, you're able to kind of say, you know, this is how many meetings we've had, this is the amount of times. You know, you know, let's say Finance participated three times, Economic Development participated two times, you know, Treasurer participated three times, things like that. It doesn't necessarily mean that everyone will still be on board. But it does allow you, I think, to say that, you know, there was quite a bit of vetting on this. And, you know, I know, you know, I don't know... I don't know if it's seven votes or nine votes, but, um, you know, I just think that will be, um, something helpful to be able to state when you are ready to go to the city council on it, that, you know, there were, there were a lot of opportunities and, and there will still be opportunities even after it enters the, um, you know, regular meeting or, or, um, you know, as a, as an item to discuss it. So that, that's my suggestion, um, uh, cause I, I just, um, I just would, for me personally, um, if, if you invited the, a couple of developers twice and they didn't come twice, well then, you, you know, you could say, you know, we, we had one meeting in July, we had another meeting in August, my phone number is always available, you know, people can call me directly and, and we still didn't hear from anyone, so, uh, that's, I would be in favor of one more meeting. Um, I think we've made it this far, I, I really like the, what the ordinance looks like now with the latest drafts. Um, it, it's, you know, we caught, we might call it a scans ordinance, but it's really becoming a nice city ordinance with a lot of input from a lot of different people. So that's my suggestion to, um, the subcommittee, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Uh, go ahead, Council Davila.
Uh, thank you, Madame Chair, um, some quick questions, first of all, uh, welcome back, Council Alan, we'd love you back. Some quick questions, um, can you refresh my memory, what's the diameter that we discussing the audience, um, to be a significant tree?
I think it is. Six inches, which was the suggestion of Alex Sherman, the forestry guy. He said that's the norm for, um, considering a tree of mature.
Right, that's on, um, in the definitions.
Okay, and to, to put it in perspective, uh, in order for the tree to grow six inches in diameter, that takes quite a few years, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Uh, all right, uh, quick question, uh, through the chair to Council Alan, if I may. Um, do we know, I see that we now know developers on the table today. Uh, did we have developers, I can recall if we had developers at the last meeting? Uh, and did the, the people that were invited to the developers today, did they make contact with us explaining why they couldn't make it?
Uh, he, he's asking you, Council Alan.
Oh, I don't know, I haven't spoken to any, I'm sorry, I didn't know that was directed at me. Um, I, I'm not part of the committee, I, I'm not on this, this committee, I don't know who the other two members are besides. Counselor, uh, Govan, I, I just, I'm just saying, based on having gone through that one ten years ago and I know it sounds dated and stuff. What happens is people will oppose something or something that nobody else agrees with, but they still oppose it. And you have to kind of dig and go again and again, that, that was my point, so. So I don't know the develop, if you're asking me about the developers, I've not reached out any developers, Counselor.
I think, uh, uh, a point well taken, if I may, Council Alan, I think, uh, you know, you're trying to be as wise as possible. However, the way I'm looking at this is that, uh, as the Madame Chair will express, this has been going for at least a year and four months or so. Uh, and we're never gonna, we're no, all of us are gonna agree on everything, so. Uh, and we'd like to remind the Chair that if, once we move this to the chambers, where we had the discussion, if we pass for a step, this is gonna come back to the committee for further discussion. So, uh, I, I think as I said in the last meeting, uh, if we delay more, uh, this is gonna be stone wall somehow, my fear is it's gonna get delayed. And, uh, I, I, I'm personally ready to move this forward in the next meeting, uh, but that's up to the, uh, to the Chair to do so. Um, and let's just have a good robust debate on this, this is important. I would like to say that yesterday, uh, in Forest Park was ninety-seven degrees. Ninety-seven degrees in Forest Park with all the streets, imagine what some part of the city would have been like. Uh, so, anyway, uh, thank you, I'm gonna share this on my comments.
Thank you, Counselor, um, yeah, and, and other parts of the city where there aren't trees, I heard on the news that it was over a hundred degrees with no trees. To that point, um, so taken into consideration, I think what, what was said today, um, I will consider having another meeting and inviting some specific developers, I will talk to the city, um, council staff and see, um, what names they sent out, what invitations they sent out for our next meeting. And I will also invite at that time, um, No One Leaves, Springfield No One Leaves, so we can have their input on this as well, because, um, you know, we don't want people to think that we don't want development, because that is certainly not the case. Um, may I ask who iPhone is, please, I'm sorry.
It's Counselor Whitfield.
Oh, okay, there you go. Sorry for that. All right, let me, let me finish my comment and then I'll, I appreciate you coming on. So, uh, we will have another meeting, although we're going to hear from a developer right now, so I appreciate that. Counselor Whitfield?
Okay, so, um, well, I, I'm, I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure I understand the ordinance, um, because we do have conservation land and conservation areas where we can't cut, um, the trees in the area. And I'm not sure, I, I read five thousand square feet and then if four thousand square feet is covered by trees, does, is it saying you have to leave twenty-five percent of the trees or you just cannot cut on the parcel at all?
No, so you have to leave a twenty-five percent canopy on there. It's on, um, applicability B. If there's all five, all parcels, five thousand square feet or greater in size with a tree canopy greater than twenty-five percent shall be considered applicable to the terms. So any parcel that's over five thousand feet, you can't, um, go on there without a permit. This is, um, creating the permit, um, process, uh, through the city, through the, um, urban woodlands commission.
So you already know how I feel about permits, it's more red tape, it's more bureaucracy. It's already extremely hard for developers to develop in the city of Springfield. Um, there's a housing shortage and even just to build residential home can sometimes take a year just to put the shovel on the ground. That's one point. Um, the second point is, will the twenty-five percent canopy have any effect on the setbacks that developers, um, have to have when they're building properties on five thousand square feet and more, cause those are buildable lots. Do you know that?
I don't know that. Um, and I think the, I would believe the urban woodlands commission would come up with those details, cause I think those are going into some further details that, I don't know that this committee is, uh, prepared to put in.
I think that's important to know, because if you, um, don't, if, if, if the canopy is not counted in the setback and you have to do an additional setback, it's gonna be very hard to develop properties on anything probably under six thousand square feet. Um, and I, and I, I believe right now buildable lots are five thousand square feet or fifty-five hundred square feet. Um, and so it will, it will, you know, kind of like make it difficult to build on some lots. And some lots are eyesores in the middle of, um, a whole street that's built and things like that. So that would be something that I would be interested in knowing, does it affect the setbacks at all?
Um, I, I can actually answer, uh, a handful of those questions. Counselor Govan is comfortable with a direct response or if you'd rather wait?
Go ahead, Amy.
Okay, it's Amy, hold on one second, Amy, um, who are you, please?
I'm gonna introduce myself.
Okay.
So, um, I'm Amy Loyzel, I'm, um, by my job, I'm a professor at Central Connecticut State and I'm the president of the Springfield Conservation and Nature Stewardship. And we've been working for two years on developing this ordinance. Um, and we've been working primarily with Counselor Govan and we've done most of their research into other municipalities that have them. So we just, so, uh, Jay Latori, Brian Skelly and myself have just been in the weeds on how have other cities done this. Um, so the one, first thing we want to say, we're not anti-development, what we want is modern urban planning. Um, so sorry for some of the people are gonna hear this again, but, um, so what we want to do is, um, encourage, uh, climate change as part of development planning, this isn't about blocking it. It's about integrating modern science into urban planning. So modern science says the only thing that cools cities citywide are large clusters of, of mature trees. So this ordinance is only about trees that have six inches or greater in diameter. If it's some rough scruffy lot that's got like saplings and shrubs on it, that's not an urban woodland. So there's a very clear definition in here that urban woodlands are trees of six inches or greater at chest level diameter, which is what the city forester said. And it's if they offer twenty-five percent canopy. And then it's not that the developer can't go in and develop on the land, it's just that he has to leave or she has to leave a certain percentage of trees based on the permit. And we understand that city bureaucracy is a pain, just dealing with this ordinance is a giant pain. Um, but we, but we believe that climate change requires better management of the only scientifically proven way to deal with climate change. You know, we're having ninety-degree days in May, hundred-degree weeks in July. In ten or twenty years, that's gonna be worse. And the only thing that helps cities with that is mature forests, not planting individual trees. Those are wonderful, but they don't cool a city. So what we're just doing with this ordinance and we studied multiple other cities that have them, other cities have had these on the books for ten, twenty years. Um, so this is not new, it's, it's not radical. And these other cities, what they've done is they've said to developers, instead of buying these five thousand square foot lots and putting up five hundred thousand dollar homes by clear cutting, what we prefer is that you would leave tree canopy or buy the lots, as you describe, uh, Counselor, uh, Whitfield, of, um, the scrub lots, the derelict lots, the empty parking lots, there's plenty of spaces for developers to build housing. Um, and so what we're just trying to do is shift the development paradigm. As for the setback, this has nothing to do with the setback, it's just purely about the size of the trees and the canopy over the entire lot. It has nothing to do with the setback, um, designation.
And it will, it will, one moment, but it will have something to do with the parking spaces, because we have to have, um, a certain amount of lot, allotted parking spaces, like one and a half per, um, unit. I, we develop multifamily houses, we try not to develop five hundred thousand dollar houses, but the cost of material is what determines that. Um, the cost of what is being developed, but we are also trying to get young people into multifamily houses to help them build generational wealth and other things. I'm not against climate, I actually work in the climate industry as well. Um, but there is more factors than just climate and so I'm just trying to get to what some of those are. And I know, because I'm struggling right now with parking area based on a five, fifty-five hundred, um, square, square foot lot right now. And our last development, we were required to keep trees on the property. So I'm not really sure what will be different with this one.
Okay, if you were required to keep tree, uh, trees, most likely that was not the city, unless, um, there are, Alex Sherman through the forestry division does have laws about significant or historic trees, so, but those are just individuals.
No, it was the city, it was the city, it was Phil Dromy's department, it was the planning team. They required us to keep a certain amount of trees in the, um, on the, on the property. There was some trees that we could cut, it was some that we couldn't.
Right, and most likely, though, that was a report from forestry, uh, division that didn't have anything to do with, like, the, the regulations that this would do. So this is a different, this, these complement what Alex Sherman's office does, so.
I don't think that had anything to do with Alex Sherman, but I don't know for sure. And I don't even think that's the point right now. Yes, Counselor Govan.
I think, I think you missed, before, before you got here, we were talking about, um, incentivizing developers to develop on property that's already out there, existing, um, and finding ways to do that as opposed to cutting down a forest in the middle of our city. So that's something that we are going to be talking about further.
Well, I will bring my points to the city council meeting, as I always do. And so I look forward to the debate at that time. I, I don't know if any developers were contacted and if they were, I'm, because we are on the development list and didn't get any type of notification. I also don't want to put a narrative out there that developers were contacted and are not showing up, so that is something.
That you could give us, so that we can check it out?
Jerry McCafferty does.
Okay, cause I know the city council staff did, uh, reach out to some developers.
Okay, yeah, she has an extensive list, um, especially of minority, um, developers, which is, is a bit harder to develop, um, in the city of Springfield than the larger developers who this ordinance probably will impact more, um, than the larger developers. So it would be, um, I think, very, um, interesting to just hear that point of view.
And again, thank you, uh, for expressing your, your concerns and your, um, opinions. All right, uh, Council Davila, you had your hand up, did you still want to have, um, a comment or question?
Uh, no, I was, uh, no, I don't, thank you.
Thank you, okay, great. All right, good, so I think I really appreciate, um, that we at least had one developer here. Uh, because that's what we want to hear. So I, I will be setting up another meeting, this is, uh, July, probably mid, late, mid to late August. We can have another, uh, meeting to include, um, some specific developers and some, and people from No One Leaves, so that we can have some other input and some maybe ideas, right? Um, remembering the reason why we're doing this, um, and it is for the future of a coolness of our city. All right, all right, so if there's no one else, our hearts and minds are clear. We're gonna, uh, meeting, thank you all, have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks, bye.